Ladies and gentlemen, now you know what liberalism and socialism and the Democrat Party look like. You reach into the pockets of people who don't want something for the benefit of a few. I sat here four years ago and I begged you for a public vote. And now this RS fiber is nothing but a financial disaster. You've got elderly and families with children in this community who now have to reach into their pocket who didn't want it, didn't need it, and have to bail this thing out. And all for a few farmers who couldn't get high-speed internet. They had options to get high-speed internet. I think each of you who voted for this, and Mayor, you wouldn't overturn that vote. We could have had a vote. I think each of you who voted for it should resign. The citizens of Winthrop is your constituency. It's not the farmers.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? If not, we'll move forward. Approval of the agenda. We're going to establish the agenda. Aaron, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Lyle?
No.
Pete? Julie?
Nothing.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Bob?
No.
Jenny? Okay, I just want to add a couple of thank yous at the end. That doesn't have to be out there. Okay, the consent agendas. Everybody had an opportunity to take a look at everything. Regular minutes, a special meeting, claims for the month, resolution relating to designating a polling place, approval of a license, and everything.
Polling place is the same?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, it's in there.
It's here.
Everybody has had an opportunity to take a look at it.
I'm looking.
All of the consent agendas?
Second.
I think Melissa has something to add to the consent agenda. The ambulance and fire wages.
And your budget.
I was going to say, that's not it.
I was going to say, that's pretty big fire.
I think that's the same thing we had on our computer.
No, these are the bills that came in since then, and then somebody should have the ambulance and fire wages.
So this is for the end of year?
End of the year.
Okay.
Melissa disappeared. This is not the entire list of firemen, is it?
No, some of them are. Some of them got paid out of payroll, anyone over $600. The rest of them got paid out of AP because they didn't have taxes withheld.
The officers and all that, they had made more than the $600 threshold, so they had withholding.
What does my burns mean? What does my burns mean? I can't tell.
What are these, the salaries that the ambulance?
That's all the annual payroll.
The what?
The council, too. Annual, all the annual payroll.
That's based on their run still, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
They have a worksheet that they submit.
And they're still under budget, right?
Yes, I think it was $45,000 left.
That much?
For salaries.
Nice.
Or 35, yeah. And that was 34, was the total 34?
Yeah.
I want approval of the consent agenda with both additions.
Second. Julie's made a motion to approve it, the consent agenda. Dale has seconded it. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. What we're going to do now is close this meeting and open up the public hearing. So I will be opening up the public hearing right now. Before we open it up to the public, we want to explain, we had a work session a couple of weeks ago, and we did do some adjusting to the budget at that time. Melissa or Jenny, do you want to explain the cuts that we made to that budget and where we're currently at?
Do you want to?
We, after our work session, we cut the budget down to, it would be 6.48% instead of what we had with 17, I believe, which is what was sent.
Eighteen.
Or eighteen, and that was what reflected on everyone's.
The proposed taxes?
Proposed taxes. So that will change now when this is submitted to reflect that.
The actual taxes.
Percentage that we cut.
So our proposed was roughly 18%, and after our work session where we made certain cuts, we, it is now 6.43%.
Or eight.
Or 6.48%. Do you have a list of where we did some of those cuts?
I do a few.
Good.
Is that okay? We cut $4,631 from the legal budget. We cut $5,000 from part-time police, $600 from the police telephone, $19,000 from street structural repairs, snow temporary employees, $500, library telephone, $400, fire professional services, $1,500, library capital reserves, $500 for the carpet, and library capital reserves, $500 for the computer. We cut $5,000 out of the municipal building capital reserves for windows. We moved money from reserves to general fund for expenses from small cities assistance fund, $15,000. That can be applied to street projects in the street department. RS fiber reserve fund, we moved $15,000 to cover expenses, and from fines and forfeitures, $4,854,000. The total from reserves was $34,854, and our total recommended reduction of the levy would be $72,485.
Dale, did you have something?
Yeah, so basically, if you look at your tax statement from the county, you're going to see, some people are seeing between 26 and 30% increase in taxes. You can take 11.5% right off the top. Winthrop, that portion is gone. What we have to do is, we have to set our maximum levy, and we have to report that to the state. That's how they generate those forms. So we always have to go on the high side, and then we can cut it down later, but it doesn't reflect on that current form. It'll reflect on the statement, the next statement you get. Because we can't say, we're going to raise it 5%, and then all of a sudden we find out we need a 20% increase. You can't raise it, but you can lower it. So we always have the worst-case scenario, and that's what you're seeing on your statements out there. Does anybody know what the county got it down to, or did they make any cuts?
They haven't yet. I think their final.
I don't know when theirs is.
It's next week.
Okay. And does anybody know where the school board's at with theirs?
I do not.
Okay. So basically, if you take the total tax there and take it times 88%, that's what you'll actually be paying. Take 11.5% off, that's what you'll actually be paying on the city of Winthrop. What I don't know what the kind of, I can do, I get, you can use my calculator. It's real simple. You've got a phone. But I guess every year I call when I get these things, call the assessor, and I say, "Hi, what's up?" You know? And they're, they know me, they know I'm going to call. And the reason I do that is, every year, I keep seeing our property values just skyrocketing. And what causes that is actually the house sales in Winthrop. Last year, it was 15% across the board. They take all the houses in Winthrop, and they total up how much they sold for, and then they take how many square feet, and they divide that. And that's what a house is worth, based upon what they sold for. So if a house is assessed at $56,000 and sells for $166,000, guess what? Your value's going to go up. So at the end of the year, when they do the statement, that higher value and our maximum levy, it's kind of scary. But it isn't, not as bad as what you're seeing on the statements. Just take, like I said, 11.5% off the Winthrop, you'll smile a little bit, but it's not going to be that bad. I don't know where the county and the schools at.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
And I, thank you. I came here for information that I was unaware of, and I have that information.
Yes.
I'm just curious, is this typical that if you look at a person's income?
Mm-hmm.
It's never, that I've known in my career, ever gone up this much of a percentage, even what you're, not, I mean, what you're saying, you can take off, you know, a certain amount of money. So are they ever aligned, that the amount of your taxes, that your local taxes, do they ever align with what people's incomes are?
No, they don't. There's so many ver, there's, no, they don't. Like, four years ago, we did zero. We got it at zero. The next year, I think we got it at, what, two and a half? I think last year was three and a half. From a proposed of 11 and 18, and we managed to whittle down, because we're all pretty good about finding that missing dollar. But, you know, the average federal employee gets 2%, you know? And so I always, as I was military for a lot of years, and so I always look at that 2% as a tolerable amount of increase. And so these guys and gals will tell you that, I always tell them, I'm bringing my red curry on.
That's fine.
Because that's, that's my goal, is to try to get it down as low as possible, but you can't do it sometimes. We had a, we had a bond come due for the Eighth Street project this year, it was our first payment on that, and that was a pretty good levy that we had to add for that. We're trying to do some things to offset that. You might have seen some talk of electric meters and water meters coming in. Has anybody heard about this? We're looking, I gave an example. Can I talk about that? Is it okay? Everybody all right with this? We're looking at possibly switching over to an electronic metering system, so you don't have to read your meters anymore. And the accuracy of these things, right now, some of our meters are 50% off. So the accuracy of this will allow us to hopefully not have to raise rates and maybe set some of that money aside to cover bond projects for street repairs, instead of having to levy that money. We figured the electric meters would pay for themselves in about 14 months, and the water meters would pay for themselves in two and a half years. So that project will be a self-sustaining, and then down the road will help kind of take some of these big swings out. But when you have a major, you know, major repair, Eighth Street, and you've got to throw money at the, you know, get a bond, you're going to have a big jump. Luckily, in the past, our city fathers and mothers and managers have managed to keep a pretty good reserve fund. We didn't dip into it. We took a little bit this year. I mean, we could have taken all the reserve and not raised taxes, but then what do you do next year? So they've done a really good job here of taking a little bit from here and there in the little nest eggs, instead of spending all of them. So hopefully, you know, we don't have to raise those taxes. We're going to have to. And like you said, it doesn't pace anybody's income, but we sure would like to. I would.
Well, I'm sure all of you would. I, I don't.
I'd actually like, I'd like to see a nice negative one here.
But I'm just, I'm curious about that. I'm also curious, what, what age group is most prominent in this community?
Jenny, you have any idea? Didn't we talk about this one?
We do have some information on that.
Yeah. Is it in the comp plan? Does it address that?
It might be in the comp plan. It might be in the comp plan.
Typically, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can get that to you, Terry. I have, I don't have the comp plan with me, but I can certainly give you a call tomorrow.
I would really, I agree. I would, and the reason I'm asking that is simply because you're looking at a, I would assume that it's probably a, a big percentage of people here are more than likely retired. And if they're living on a social security income, that increases by 2%. You're asking them, you're asking, you know, for a lot. And I, I know, I said this before, $200, $300, it isn't, it's no big deal. It isn't. However, when you look at percentage, and if it continues to do that year after year...
It's untenable for some people, yeah.
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
As we go into our street projects, it's going to get worse.
Yeah.
Because we assess 25%, and the city pays 75%. So if you had a new street in front of your house, you actually get assessed 25, and the whole city picks up the other 75.
75.
Yeah.
The other thing that Dale mentioned, and I would just like to reiterate, is that it's not ju, the increase is not just the city's portion that our increase, even if we held it at zero, if your property value increased, your property taxes are going to go up.
Going to go up.
So it was kind of a double whammy this year, especially on that initial statement, because everything is high. I, I'm quite confident, I mean, obviously, ours is down to 6.48%. I'm pretty sure the county will drop theirs. I mean, that, that's just how everybody, yeah, that's usually how it works. You set that levy high, and then you can decrease it, but you can't increase it.
Right.
I looked at my property taxes. I was glad to see it go up. It was down so low, so low. I would never sell my house for a percentage.
I hope you don't, because...
Oh, no. I mean, you know, yeah, they're going to the dog park, yeah.
I hate the dogs.
But, but in all seriousness, you know, when they're so low, you know?
Yeah.
Somebody, say you've got a house that's worth, you think $100,000, and they're telling you it's worth 46,000, you're saying, "Now, come on. There's something wrong here," you know?
That's true. I mean, if you think about that, increasing property values is not a bad thing in itself. It's actually a good thing, just depending on your point of view at that particular point in time.
Yeah, but Pete, that's what you're paying taxes on.
Yeah.
That doesn't, that's not necessarily the value.
But when you come to buy my house, you're not going to give me the, I say it's $100, you're going to say, "The property value is."
No, I won't say.
Oh, yeah, you are. You're in a market value.
What will the market bear? That's exactly right.
Well, if you plan on living there a long time, I don't mind having mine valued low, but if you do look at selling one day, you'll want it at the proper amount.
People who want to refinance, you know, you can...
And there are, there are some recourses to you. If you're, what's the percentage of tax, if it increases a certain percentage, you can get a refund from the state.
10%.
Is it 10%? So there are some things, and it also, that's, that's affected by age group, too. So there are a couple of things you can look into.
Damn cell phones.
I hope mine doesn't go off.
I feel it out if you...
And you can bring your dog over for a playdate with my dogs anytime. We've got a fenced yard, so.
If he never sells, yeah.
I have several out-of-town roads that we, that we go to, the pond roads.
So where, where was our final amount for?
For the levy?
The levy was seven, uh...
The dollar amount?
The dollar amount.
Hold on.
Yeah. Like I said, I call every year, they know me by name over there. It's hilarious.
725-117.
725-117.
Yep.
And what was the last time?
681-008. It's a difference of $126,072. Well, that's not right.
No, that's not right.
Forty-something. And considering what we had to overcome this year, that's...
Yeah.
A jump.
Are there any more questions from anyone in the audience? Okay. Council, is there any more? No. Okay. Well, we'll move on, then. I will close the public hearing. Is there any, before I close the public hearing, is there any information that you wanted that, that we could give you right now? Okay. All right. Then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go back to our regular...
Your business.
...meeting. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution for the property tax levy at 725-117. So move. Yes? I'll second it. Lyle made a motion to go ahead and approve the resolution, and Bob has seconded that for 725-117. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Ordinance, amending the zoning district boundaries of the city of Winthrop.
The planning commission held a public hearing last Monday on rezone request for Josh Byro, who, and his Midwest RV sales. He bought the Vernis Kolkesh Quonsett and property. He would, wanted it rezoned C2 highway commercial to allow for small storage units to be built there. Darren's recommendation was, that is in line with, you know, the rest of the area. The property across Second Street there is also C2 highway commercial, where those current storage units are. The planning commission recommends that they allow the rezone of that property, and this resolution, the first reading, will start that process.
Okay. I entertain a motion? Well, we just recommended it to the council, right? To discuss?
The planning commission did. They recommended.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, you're on the planning commission. Now they need to approve it.
I move approval.
Okay, Julie has made a motion to go ahead and approve the zoning change. Is there a second? I'll second it. Bob has seconded it. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we have in 2008 Chevy Aveo sealed bids, and I believe we have two bids here.
Yep.
First bid is for $400. And the second bid is for $250. So council, now that was a forfeiture vehicle.
Yes.
That's the one we kept, because we were going to use it as an administrative vehicle.
So...
IE clown car.
Choose to go ahead and sell it, accept one of these bids, or?
I move we accept the high bid.
Dale has moved to accept the bid for $400.
Second.
Lyle has seconded it. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Who was it? Who got the high bid?
Rob Gleason.
Who did?
Rob Gleason.
He got it again.
This time, he doesn't have ill damage, though.
Yeah.
Good price, though. Okay, approve hire of Paul Hagel, utility public works position.
Was that just last Monday we had interviews?
Yeah.
Okay. Last Monday, we interviewed three applicants for the utility position, and the committee after the interviews recommend the hire of Paul Hagel. He has accepted contingent on approval tonight, passing the background check, drug test, and he can't start until February 1st.
Can you give us a little background?
He, he lives in Nebraska right now. They're moving up here. He, his daughter, stepdaughter-in-law is Erin Jacobson. Erin Ja, his wife is Mary, his wife is Erin Jacobson's mother, and Ryan Jacobson, they both work at the school.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and their kids all live in this area. They want to move back here. He has an associate's degree in utility maintenance. He has a lot of work history. He's worked for municipal utilities. He's worked for municipal gas. He's owned his own landscaping business. He can do pretty much everything, so he hit all the marks that we were looking for.
That'd be a good addition, I think.
He's excited about moving up here. He called again today just to get some more information, and I think he'll be a good fit to our staff.
So what are you asking for tonight?
Approval of his hire. Yep.
Intervene a motion?
I'll make a motion, we hire Paul Hagel. I'll second it. Julie can second it.
Okay, Dale has made the motion, go ahead and hire Paul Hagel, and Julie has seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, the ordinance authorizing sale of 415 North Hennepin Street.
This is just to finalize the sale of the house that we sold on sealed bid last month. We need to sell all of our properties by ordinance, according to city code, and this resolution will, or ordinance will start that process.
That's Melissa's.
And can I just say how nice it is to see the downstairs? It looks good.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make that motion.
Julie has made a motion to go ahead and approve the sale, or authorize the sale, I'm sorry. And Bob has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We came out pretty good on that.
Broke even.
We broke even.
That's good. That's good.
We had rhythm.
Okay. Reports, city administrator.
The sale, well, 415 is almost final. The electric meters have been ordered. We ordered, started out 250. They should be here, we should be able to start installing the electric meters in April. I'm working on a bid packet for the water meters that I will have Troy review before I give it to you guys for final approval. I've, I submitted the 2019 Music in the Park grant application. Scott Keister and I, he was in today, we're working on getting a list of donated supplies for the pavilion, so we can get a bid packet together. I finished the MMUA Leadership Academy last Wednesday. That was a really great program. It has brought, brought to my attention that the Larry Anderson property has not been annexed. I'm working with Aaron on getting a resolution and working on getting that taken care of, so that gets annexed. Troy and I are working on a fire hydrant policy. We don't really have an official policy in Winthrop, so we probably should have one. Lafayette, I got a copy of theirs, and the homeowners are responsible for cleaning them, but what Troy and I were discussing is, some people just can't, and they're gone in the winter, so if there's a way we could help out people who need help to clean them, we could probably do that, and how to make that language work. I met with Mindat.
We're not going to clean them anymore?
Huh?
We're not going to clean them anymore?
Well, we do now, but we don't do them all.
Okay.
So I think the guys, if they see one, they clean it, and they kind of hope that the homeowner cleans their own, and we don't really have anything, and it would be nice to have them cleaned out. I met with Mindat on a 2024 project on Highway 15 from the railroad tracks to Highway 19. I also told him how bad a shape that Highway 19 was in. They said they were going to look at it. Whether or not they do, I don't know. The sale of 305 Pine Circle fell through. Melissa and Dale met with Marco, formerly Business Wares, to discuss the phone system. It sounds like they had a really good meeting, and Dale's got some good ideas on how to trim some of that phone budget.
A lot.
Troy is meeting with Jerpies this week to look at Brown Street and some tiling options on trying to alleviate that stormwater issue out there. And I did email Mike just as a courtesy to let him know that we're still working on it, so he kind of knows where we're at with that. And for the committee vacancies, I will be plant, advertising for one planning commission seat, one EDA position, or one EDA seat, and three charter commission seats before next month.
You know, on that highway, that intersection?
Mm-hmm.
Somebody's going to lose their car in that one manhole that belongs to the city.
Which one? Do you know which one?
Right in the intersection. Right in the middle.
Which intersection?
And can I just say how nice it is to see the downstairs? It looks good.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make that motion.
Julie has made a motion to go ahead and approve the sale. Or authorize the sale, I'm sorry. And Bob has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
We came out pretty good on that.
Broke even.
We broke even.
Broke even.
We did.
That's good, that's good.
We had rhythm.
Okay, reports, city administrator.
Uh, the sale, well, 415 is almost final. Um, the electric meters have been ordered. We ordered, started out 250. They should be here, we should be able to start installing the electric meters in April. I'm working on a bid packet for the water meters that I will have Troy review before I give it to you guys for final approval. I've, I submitted the 2019 Music in the Park grant application. Scott Keister and I, he was in today, we're working on getting a list of donated supplies for the pavilion so we can get a bid packet together. Um, I finished the MMUA Leadership Academy last Wednesday. That was really great program. It has brought, brought to my attention that the Larry Anderson property has not been annexed. I'm working with Aaron on getting a resolution and working on getting that taken care of, so that gets annexed. Uh, Troy and I are working on a fire hydrant policy. We don't really have an official policy in Winthrop, so we probably should have one. Lafayette, I got a copy of theirs, and the homeowners are responsible for cleaning them, but what Troy and I were discussing is some people just can't, and they're gone in the winter, so if there's a way we could help out people who need help to clean them, we could probably do that and how to make that language work. I met with Mindat. Huh?
We're not going to clean them anymore?
Well, we do now, but we don't do them all.
Okay.
So, I think the guys, if they see one, they clean it, and they kind of hope that the homeowner cleans their own, and we don't really have anything, and it would be nice to have them cleaned out. I met with Mindat on a 2024 project on Highway 15 from the railroad tracks to Highway 19. Um, I also told him how bad a shape that Highway 19 was in. They said they were going to look at it. Whether or not they do, I don't know. Um, the sale of 305 Pine Circle fell through. Melissa and Dale met with Marco, formerly Business Wares, to discuss the phone system. It sounds like they had a really good meeting, and Dale's got some good ideas on how to trim some of that phone budget. Troy is meeting with Jerbys this week to look at Brown Street and some tiling options on trying to alleviate that stormwater issue out there. And I did email Mike just as a courtesy to let him know that we're still working on it, so he kind of knows where we're at with that. Um, and for the committee vacancies, I will be plant, advertising for one planning commission seat, one EDA position, or one EDA seat, and three charter commission seats before next month.
You know, on that highway, that intersection?
Mhm.
Somebody's going to lose their car in that one manhole that belongs to the city.
Which one?
Right in the intersection.
Which intersection?
Right.
On Brown?
Uh, on 30, Highway 33.
Oh, the old Highway 15 there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Boy.
In, in Highway 19 or on 33?
It's on 19.
Okay.
But it's our manhole.
Uh huh.
And that must be that low.
Oh, yeah, I, yep.
Man, you come at night, you hit that baby, I tell you, it's a whale.
You, are you aware of that?
You could drive a Chevy.
It should be raised up.
That would wreck.
Maybe have Jerbys look at that one there in town, too.
They fill the holes.
Okay, and did you want to talk about the EDA right away?
Might as well. Um, for the month of November, I spent 43 and a half hours on EDA. The majority of that time was on the business retention and expansion course. I'm now finished with the course, and I hope to start doing business visits in 2019. Uh, we finished Aaron Walton's loan, and that's complete, and I think you closed on Friday.
Friday.
Yes, on the, he is the official owner of David Shower's Law Office now. Um, I attended the broadband coalition meeting regarding broadband day on the hill, which will be April 3rd, 2019. Um, the housing grant project fell through, so I went, drew our application from the state. Um, and we will be meeting to walk through the Bauer Building to decide on what additional work needs to be done. The first cleanup has been completed. The carpet's out. It smells way better in there with just the carpet out. Um, but it's probably going to need a new furnace and central air unit, and um, I'm waiting to get an estimate from BNR, so we're kind of going to decide what needs to be done to get that up to.
There any mold in the walls or anything?
Yes, lots of mold.
I didn't get that far into it.
Ceiling, everything.
They tore the ceiling out.
I was going to say, I think a lot of it was torn down.
So unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, legal counsel, did you have any?
Not a lot. We did, like Jenny said, the closing on my shower office Friday afternoon. I'm still.
So we're stuck with you.
Everything over there.
And we still have an attorney at town?
Yeah.
Yes, indeed.
But month of November, we were doing the usual prosecution, and city, I haven't added up any hours or anything yet.
Okay.
Everything's going well, I think.
Mhm, good. Thank you, Aaron. Water and sewer. Troy, did you have anything? I think you should talk to Dale. We were talking about that tire line.
I'm going to talk to him after the meeting, yeah.
Just make sure we're talking about the same thing out on Brown. Street department, Gordy's not here. Electric department, uh, did you want to talk about the, the MMPA meetings?
Well. Couple things. A lot of time was spent on, they're going to decommission our wind generator.
Yeah, can we keep that?
No.
And, uh.
It's noisy and it kills birds.
There was a lot of discussion that cities have kind of identified around the wind generator.
Mhm.
And if they want to market green power and et cetera, then they're going to take something down that you had put in. My understanding is, is that the generator is old, they can't, it's not that they can't find parts necessarily, they can't find anybody to come out to service it. And another reason is, is because the towns are so far apart. It's not like, you know, you're in a wind farm and you service a whole bunch of them. But they were left with a clear message that, uh, we want a wind generator. And so who knows, we'll probably have a 75 footer up there.
Is that why Dave didn't answer me when I told him we wanted to keep ours? Because I wasn't the only one.
Really, we went from, uh, we started at 10 o'clock in the morning, we went to 3 o'clock in the afternoon discussing that.
Well, how much power does that wind generator, I mean, a house, two houses?
Not as much as you think, but, um, you know. It's, it's been kind of the identity of the MMPA, they have wind, hometown energy, you know.
I have it on our logo. It's on our logo.
Is there anything else, Pete?
You can leave the logo, I wouldn't change.
I asked Brian if he could take it off and kind of push it, smoosh it together, and so.
But the other thing, Jenny, I kind of, I came in and you were at a meeting that they, they're talking water meters or electric meters, we're talking electric meters, and I think we're talking different things.
I talked to that Aaron, or Eric.
Yeah.
And the ones we're getting will work with what they want to do, so.
Well, they were talking about, this is Dale's, this is Dale's area. They were talking about a 900 megahertz system or something like that. You know, I don't know. Don't know what a megahertz is, no. But, uh, what they, they were talking about is having two-way communication.
Mhm.
And, uh.
But we won't have the tower that will allow that two-way communication. We can upgrade to that.
Okay.
But the drive-by system isn't going to allow the two-way communication.
The meters are capable of doing it.
Correct.
And they recommended two systems. One was called Itron.
Itron.
Itron, and the other one was Eaton.
Yep.
I've looked at both of those. Um, Eaton are very similar to what we have. Itron does not, at least what I've looked on Itron, either you do the drive-by or you do the, or you do the AMI, right. And the system we're getting, we can start with the drive-by, and we can upgrade to the AMI just by putting the tower up. We don't have to trade out meters.
But it's, it's one of those two that I mentioned, the meter itself?
No, the ones we are, we're getting census meters. They're the same ones that Hutchinson has, and they've done the same thing. But Eaton, Eaton and census are very similar.
So anyway, I asked, well, what was the cost of the meter? And they told me between $300 and $500.
Ours are $125.
Well, that's why I got scared.
Yeah.
Are we putting in something that in a few years, they're going to say, we would like you to upgrade to this or something like that, you know.
Well, according to Eric, what we have will work, but we have to put in the tower. And I don't know that we're ready to bite that bullet yet, because that tower is about $80,000 to put up, and it's about $20,000 a year in maintenance.
Wow.
And what Derek, what Derek is saying is, is that power is becoming very competitive
in a lot of services. And that we should have a system that we are able to offer demand and so forth to our. Yeah, so that if somebody wants their water heater turned off at 8 o'clock, it can run till, till the morning, we can do that.
These will do time of day. They'll do, you know, we can do the shut-off, or, you know, load management and all that, but not with the drive-by. We'd have to upgrade to the AMI.
Well, my question was, how come ours is so cheap and theirs is so expensive?
Well.
It's called markup.
Well, and, and, you know, you have the meter, and then you have the radio part. So if, once you add the radio part on, yeah, that's the total cost of the meter, so. And that could very well be what's included in the price he gave you, is the meter plus the radial read, so.
And that's if we use the tower.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Anything else, Pete?
Pretty much it, except that we're on hold to get a 100-foot wind generator.
Solar, Pete.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question. Where do we exactly stand with RS fiber? Does anybody know?
You want to report from the?
I know the, what was in the paper didn't sound real.
Well, let's, Julie, would you like to comment on that?
What we know right now is the, um, the Joint Powers Board met last week, and the Co-op Board addressed us at that time. They are, they, there wasn't any action taken. They're currently looking for, um, new solutions, approaches, you know, to work through their current challenges. They had a, a statement saying that they, um, were still looking forward. They are very appreciative of the support the cities have shown. Their goal as a cooperative is still to make the cities whole at some point, even if it's stretched out farther into the future. They are very aware of, um, the dollars we have pledged in support of this and the, the support in kind that isn't lost on them. The, the Co-op Board, um, is very appreciative and mindful of that. So, well, as I said, they didn't have a lot of informa, a lot of information for action at that time. We anticipate there will be more meetings coming up in the next month or two. The other takeaway I had from that meeting was that, um, there are 10 cities, and 17, yeah, 27 entities altogether, 17 townships. The, there was a representative from all but I think two at that meeting, and the support was still strong. This, the, the 10 cities, everyone else around the table was still very supportive of the project. And I think that's something positive that we should, um, communicate to, um, our community. You know, their, their biggest thing is they would like to, people to know that the service is here. It's not going anywhere, and they would like to increase their subscribership as much as they can. It, it's a fabulous service. Nobody's had any issues once they've gotten it. So I will keep you apprised here at council meetings as we go, as soon as there's another Joint Powers Board. I'm the secretary treasurer for the Joint Powers Board, so, um, I will let you know when anything happens.
What, what's happening out in the rural area?
The rural area, they service with the air service, which is, um, far better service than almost anybody else has they've been able to get. That's been a very good addition to the project. They have air towers, so, um, they need a line of sight. Say if you're in a farm place, you have to be able to, you know.
Yeah.
But, um, that's been, that's been a growing, um, part of the business, too.
Did those townships commit any?
To get the air service, you do not have to be within the footprint. Anybody can do that, if, if you're within a line of sight.
I thought, though, when that went in, that they put the towers in just as a temporary thing till they got the line.
There's a second part of the project, and that would be building out to the rural areas, but that was when the first part became self-sustained, sustainable.
Yeah, and the, you know, the air towers, I think maybe were initially a way to provide some service to the rural area. And, you know, if, yeah, everything worked according to plan, they would eventually get there, but, um, I think that's not really the part for discussion right now. The, with the air towers, the service there is.
My, my, my thinking is always, why would I want, if I'm serviced now, why would I want to go to a hard line when I've got the tower?
This will increase speed.
If you want internet.
There's no video with.
Video and stuff like that.
And get phone, just get video, or just internet.
No. In the town of Winthrop, the subscriber thing, it's never going to go until we get some competition. And by that, I mean, whether you're on MediaCom or Direct or whatever, you'll sign me up for $39.99 for two years, and I've been there for 10 years, and I'm paying $100. And it doesn't, that doesn't, so in Winthrop, you play the game. In two years, I go from Dish to Direct to MediaCom, and maybe, you know, I mean, why wouldn't you?
Because you need, I think with younger families and with businesses, the high-speed internet is extremely important. I think most kids now have their computers. Many of us will go back home, work on our computers. The high-speed internet allows you to do that with, you know.
The makes on the MediaCom that are pretty decent.
I had, I had MediaCom, and it was, it was high.
I got DSL.
I was paying over $200.
I pay hardly anything.
Yeah.
For MediaCom?
No, I'm on the phone company with DSL. It's cheap.
Like I say, when you talk about, I don't know, for the homeowner, what I'm saying is, I don't know how fast is fast, or how much is how much. If I was a doctor, or I was in the trading business or something like that, I'd say, uh huh. You know what I mean?
Or if you happen to be a homeowner with three or four children at home who are all doing homework and watching, you know, something on Netflix and doing something else, it, it is fantastic, and it's reliable. We, I, I've had it for at least a couple of years already, and we've never had any outages. We, it's been very, very good.
But I mean, say, that aside, say I just want the TV and I don't want your computer stuff. It's still, $100 a month for TV is high.
I didn't think it was that much. I thought it's been half there.
Close.
Well, but you, if you look at the package deal, it's still, it's very comparable unless the competitors are doing the, you know, here's $39.99 for a month or whatever.
Well, it's not a month, it's a two-year deal. But here's what I'm saying. If you want to sell that thing, you got to get in the game and kind of offer something that's in that, that game, too. You can't say, well, we've got this and we're not backing down, you know.
And I, I, you know, I think that maybe something that they're discussing.
If you want saturation, to me, it's marketing, and if you're not marketing.
Their goal has always been, and their, their mindset in marketing has been, we provide a product, it's, it's good, um, we're not going to play those games, and, you know, undercut and undercut because they just want it to be straightforward. Here's what you get, here's what the cost is. You know, I, I understand what you're saying, because.
I mean, because if everybody else is doing it, you know, I know, just going through Medicare things coming out, what's, what's, what's the rate? I mean, you know.
You're never.
Same game, it's the same game, you know.
You're never going to need slower speeds, I think. It's always, the speeds are going to be greater and greater. You're going to need that. I mean, the applications that come out.
I don't have the study in front of me, but they, um, they referenced it at the meeting, and I know we talked about it EDA, too, that.
You're lucky.
High-speed internet connection to your home actually increases the value of your home, and, and that we've seen, um, a study they just did on the economic development impact of fiber in Sibley County was, it was in the millions of dollars. I can't, I, I should have that in front of me.
Like I said, on the business end, I can understand that a little bit. I mean, you know, like, I'm going to meetings, and Jenny has, where they're talking about data centers coming to our areas and stuff, and fiber, and what he said, you need three things. Good highway, railroad system that's reliable, which really woke me up, and, and fiber. Those are the three, in cheap land. Those are the things that these people are looking for. What I'm saying is, I, as a homeowner, I don't know if I need how fast is fast. I don't, I don't understand it, nor do I know.
And, and for a certain percentage of the population, they don't need the high speed. But I think there are the, the segment of the population that does need it will all, will continue to grow.
The other thought is that, um, you know, without this project, if RS fiber were not here, MediaCom would not be offering the fantastic two-year deals that they are. They're, you know, they're working the market. So whatever, whichever one you choose, our, our, our community is finding lower prices and better service, which even if you're going with a different company, you're getting a better deal. You're getting a better rate. So all in all, people are paying less for service, and the people who choose RS fiber are getting really, really good service.
Are there, uh, our senators and politicians are talking about beefing up, you know, cable, our, our fiber and stuff? Are there grants, you think, that'll become available through? You know, through the?
It's because we've got it.
What's that?
Maybe for the second phase.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that for a while.
We got a long list to go there, yeah. How many people do you think in town have computers?
Pretty high percentage.
Pretty high.
We have a high percentage in town.
I know a lot of people that don't, but whatever you guys think.
Yeah.
My father-in-law still has TV with an antenna.
And I put two a month for people in the last month.
All right, any more discussion? Were you going to say something to Julie?
I was just going to say, if you have questions, let me know, and I will keep you apprised as we go.
And I'm sorry I brought her up.
That'll help. They got to get vocal about that.
No, I think there's questions that people are asking.
Well, yeah, yeah.
They ask me, I don't know.
We won't know until the, down the road for a couple of months.
Right now, yeah.
That's just the way it is.
There's a lot up in the air, and.
I mean, you can guess, and you can.
We could talk about the service, but, uh, and that's been frustrating on my part is that we don't get, we don't know what's going on.
That's right.
And, and they're working on it, and, and we're hoping, we know this, it's not a dead project, that it's going to continue on.
They don't know for sure.
Oh, I think.
What's going to happen.
They're working on it. So, the, I'll tell you what, no one's going to come to your backyard and pull that, that fiber out.
Oh, that's not going to happen.
Okay, nothing from fire or ambulance? Okay, uh, cable commission, was there anything?
No, I wasn't at the last meeting. Wade was supposed to get me minutes, but he was busy, so. It didn't sound like much went on, so.
We have a new ambulance captain, Cheryl.
Oh, is Cheryl the captain?
They sent her up for Cheetos. She wasn't at the meetings. They voted her in.
That's what happens.
Always happens. You've got to go.
Always happens. You've got to go.
Okay, otherwise I want to thank Mr. Moth for his 15 years of service. 15 years.
I want to thank you guys for putting up with.
And it's been difficult, but we do, you know, we like you, that's.
How'd you come up with that odd number of 15?
It was 2003 when he started, so that's.
Was it a three-year term or?
Yeah, maybe you finished somebody's term.
It was the year when he wanted to fix the alleys and, you know.
I remember that.
We're about in the same place, aren't we, love?
Yeah. Well, Pete, you were what, 89?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine when you came on.
And I want, Jenny, never got it.
Yeah, you wanted your alley fixed.
No, he wants the water park.
Oh, the water park.
Oh, the splash pad.
Lost that.
We haven't forgotten.
Is that a new wall?
Somebody donated money for a splash pad.
$180,000 or $180,000? Okay, when I run the lottery.
Melissa sent me that. I told her, go call that lady up and see if she'll put some money our way.
Uh, the last thing I wanted to do, and again, thank you very much, Lyle. It's not an easy.
Thanks, Lyle.
Um, on behalf of the city of Winthrop, I just wanted to give my condolences to the Bruce Ponath family. We are sorry to hear that. And we want to thank him for the many years of service to Sibley County. Thank you. And now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Dale, seconded by Julie. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Got seconds.
Meeting adjourned.